We begin the meeting, so I will call the meeting to order. I imagine we should take roll since this is a public meeting, so we'll invite everyone in the room to say their names, starting with Beth.
Beth Allen, the Lakeview North neighborhood. Kelsey Kurt, Alcee Ann.
Kay, I'm your head counsel.
Cliff Strachan, council staff.
Eriksen.
Louise Jurgensen.
Dave Connect.
Dave Harding. And online on the phone is?
Kim Fargado.
Thank you. All right, we have our agenda. We'll just jump to the first item, which is deciding on the name that we would like to call this committee. So, I guess two ways to go, two potential names would be the southwest. Area Planning Committee.
Development Committee, Planning Committee, Development Committee.
Planning.
However, there's a couple of thoughts on this. There was, what was in the motion?
It was the west side.
It was west side. One thought I had for council to consider is that you have a priority called west side development, and this clearly is within the west side development, even though I think the intent is that you're focusing on the southwest area initially. Those would be my two thoughts for you to consider.
Okay? And so in the motion, it was, it was the west side develop, west side planning committee? West side planning committee. Our, we do have a priority called west side development, plan for the west side development. And here does not talk about southwest anywhere, it only talks about west.
This is your overall priority that you set back in the spring?
So, question.
Yes.
What are we doing in the southwest that is different than the west? I mean, are we talking north of center, north of the river?
Any chance that we can get a map up?
The primary areas you're focused on are from basically Center Street south.
And why?
What?
And why?
Because that's the largest undeveloped area, but when we contemplate the southwest area, it was the Fort Utah neighborhood and the three neighborhoods south of that. A lot of the northwest is already.
Developed.
Developed or planned.
Or yeah.
The high school, if I can say something, the high school is at 1390 north?
Yeah.
And all that, there's a lot of land south of that that's not developed. I think that it all needs to integrate, and so, you know, I think it's important to remember how the southwest area integrates into the parts that's a little more northern, so make sense to me to consider all of, for that west side area that hasn't been developed yet, instead of just sort of setting our boundaries on this is what we're going to look at only, because there are other parts that will integrate.
And you're focused on, you know, there are areas that you may consider changing to zoning or whatever, based on what you come up with. Plus, there are also still some agricultural properties in the northwest area that may want to participate in any programs you can come up with out of this process.
So, let me make the case for southwest. One of, one of the impetuses, impati, impetuses for, for this committee is that the city has been working for some time on the southwest master plan, and they came to the council saying, "We need some policy direction from the council so we know how to complete this plan." Luis is working on, on bringing up a map. I'm sorry for not giving you more warning, but there's, there's, in, in selecting the area, and at this point really just the name, but in selecting the area that we're really going to work on, we have to look at how it integrates with other things. For example, I think east-west connectivity is, is an important one, and we have three, three underpasses through I-15 west of Center Street on Sixth West, I think it's like Ninth West, and, sorry, Sixth South, Ninth South, and Fifth West. But that Sixth South one almost dead ends as soon as it gets past the freeway, and it's really not a good, it doesn't have good connectivity with the rest of the city because of certain issues. And so, to me, what happens just east of the freeway on Sixth South is of critical importance to west, to the southwest connectivity. So, I do think that, I do think that even, you know, regardless of the boundaries we set or the name that we set, we're going to have to look at how it integrates. And then, so, so the first one is that we already are working on a southwest master plan. Second is, we're going to need to integrate regardless. And third, I think whatever we do can help inform other areas of the city, so whatever we decide on the southwest, we might, you know, might inform what we do on the northwest. And lastly, I, I do think that there's value in, in limiting the scope, focusing a little bit more, just to, because we're, this is already a huge task, and so I think there is some value in, in limiting the scope so that we can get through it without dealing with as many issues and as many considerations. Beth has a comment.
I agree with limiting the scope and focusing on, you know, smaller areas. I was just thinking, as far as the name of the committee, it might be helpful to keep it a little more broad in case you do want to, once you feel like you have a handle on the southwest area, that you could take on another project, but maybe that's not the desire of this committee either, so I'm, you know, I don't have any strong feelings either way. I was just thinking as far as the name's a bit broad, but as far as the scope, yeah, definitely narrow it down and tackle, you know, one thing at a time.
Okay, let's go. Beth has comments, well?
I'm sorry. In the neighborhood plan, the whole area west of the freeway is called the southwest area, so that may be a point of confusion if you call it the southwest area.
That's, that's interesting.
I think it's south of Center Street.
Someone was telling me south of the Provo River.
Yeah, yeah. Essentially.
Okay, but, but Beth just said that in the neighborhood program, the southwest area includes everything west of the freeway, is that?
Yeah, because there's like a neighborhood chair that's over that pool.
I'm the area.
Are you talking about the general plan or the neighborhood plan?
Neighborhood program.
So, I'm the area chair.
Right.
And I'm over.
Oh, oh, you're talking of the council area. Okay.
No, not the council area.
Just talking about neighborhood.
Neighborhood area.
Neighborhood program.
So, I'm technically the area chair, and I'm from, everything west of the freeway is my area, all the southwest area.
Well, so where is that written? Is that on your, like when Karen calls a meeting, she calls you the southwest area? Okay, so let me show you the council areas.
I'm going to get this.
Are we talking about district maps?
The council, the council area maps are different from the neighborhood area maps, just so you know.
Yeah, well officially, yeah, we should look that up. Let me grab these real quick.
Okay.
The council area, so the council area is.
Districts, council districts?
Council districts, there are two of them that cover that area, I understand.
Right, right.
Plus the.
K and I, right.
Yeah.
So, here we have a goal of west side development, and that didn't get into, I mean, what's the boundary of that? To me, that's west of I-15, but I don't think it was specified.
It does say the area of Provo that is west of the freeway.
There you go.
Includes one, so it's not exclusive, but it includes one of the, sorry. Includes the only large tract of developable land left in Provo.
Right, so admittedly, you could argue that most of it is south of the river, but that means that most of our time is going to probably be spent focused on that area. But I, I think if we just call it the west side development, then we're going to be addressing our priority and avoiding confusion, because it'll also coincide with all the neighborhoods that Beth is over.
And you still have up on there, if you look up there, look at the boundaries outlined in red, you've still got some large areas of undeveloped land, especially in the north part.
So, red is just Provo city.
Boundaries, yeah.
It's bounding.
And you've got future annexation potential to the west of Lake Shore Drive and things like that.
That's the disband, uh, natural.
Some of it's disband.
Most of the southwest land to southern, there's limitations.
And that's going to be the Provo River Delta.
Yeah. Most of the southwest of the connector there on the north end is, we really haven't seen anything that would land itself to give development west of the Lakeview Parkway. And it's the Spain Eastman, it's the Provo River Delta that encompasses a lot of that property, so.
I'm with Kim a little bit on this, that I don't feel strongly about it. I guess at this point, I don't think we want to take much more time on, on this issue, this item. Do we want to vote as a, as a committee? Do we want to do a straw poll?
I'd, I'd say the west side connect, new west side development for me.
West side development? Okay, so, so I guess the first question is, are we, are we the southwest area or west side? And then we can decide between planning and development. So, I think I'm here, I think Kay, or sorry, Gary's here, Dave is.
West.
West, okay, west, all right. So, we will be the west side. Are we the planning committee or are we the development committee or some, some other thing?
I think you want to consider being the planning committee rather than predetermining that you are about development or not, because as, as you've talked about, and various council members have talked about issues over there, you want to have, there's a recognition that not everybody out there wants to develop, and there are some that do, so by the time they can create more options.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, so we are now the west side planning committee, which I believe is the name that was in the motion back on Tuesday. Is that, is that what we agreed, that we cited that what was?
It's probably close enough. I, I think we should go back to the council and.
That's where she's getting her southwest area council is, that's what they have it under as neighborhoods.
Okay, and that, and that does include everything?
That includes, yes, Sunset, Provo Bay, Lakewood, Lakeview North, Lakeview South, and Fort Utah, so that's where she's getting that from.
What are, what are the, the neighborhoods called that are up to the north?
I'm the top at Lakeview North.
Lakeview.
Those that are actually wrong, they don't.
So, you're talking about Carterville?
No, no, Lakeview, Lakeview North is part of the southwest area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I believe you have six neighborhoods in the area. You have Lakeview North, Lakeview South, you have Fort Utah, and then, I'm going to get these wrong, Sunset, most to the right.
Fort Utah.
Lakewood. This is the left.
Out there.
Provo Bay.
Well, they're right here.
Provo Bay.
But this is what we've always called our area councils, is named southwest area councils, so it's all of those down there.
Okay, we have southeast, southwest.
Uh-huh, northeast, northwest, and such.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move forward with west side planning committee. As far as boundaries are concerned, are we okay with limiting the scope of our immediate focus to south of the Provo River and west of I-15, and then the lake is the far boundary? Council members, any concerns on that? Kim, any concerns on that?
No, I think that's, that's a good, I agree, I focus on.
My, my suggestion is take away the word limit, just say we're going to focus on the southwest portion of the area south of that, but you're going to have issues that are going to come up.
Yeah.
We've got to broaden into a little bit.
Okay.
Transportation trails, those things.
Yeah, okay, 100% agree, you know, we need to integrate, and, but, so our area focus will be south of the river and west of I-15, knowing that these issues do need to integrate with the rest of the city. Okay. That might have been slightly more painful than necessary, but we've, we're done with item number one. Any, any thoughts before we move on to item number two? All right, item number two, I have less of a, an idea of what exactly needs to be decided here, but do we need to come up with a mission statement? Do we need to come up with?
You have it, you have it essentially with your west side development priority and a recognition that you need, and you, and you've done it with your name, right?
Okay, so let, let me just, for everyone, read our west side development priority. So, the priority is to plan for west side development. The area of Provo that's west of the freeway includes the only large tract of developable land left in Provo. A master plan needs to be developed, so maybe that's part of it, our, our, our mission, our outcomes, our, our goal is to create a master plan, or at least provide policy direction for the development of that master plan. That will ensure that growth will occur in an organized, thoughtful way with a well-balanced mix of housing and business. Proper development of the west side will allow for a vibrant and sustainable area which provides a high quality of life for future residents. Desired outcomes are a balanced mix of housing and business, walkable neighborhoods, a mix of desirable housing options that makes Provo an attractive place to raise a family, start a business, or retire. Connectivity and establish clear policy relating to green space agriculture and parks. Yes, Mr. Connect?
I like everything in there, but I would just point out that we already have, in the general plan, some statements about this area.
Okay.
And then each neighborhood currently has a plan, even though it's always, you know, up for review, but there's a plan there. So, within those statements currently in the general plan, there are some key elements that I think probably need to be looked at closely to see, you know, do we think they're applicable, applicable, I mean, do we want to really incorporate them? And in particular, it talks about the west side being different, being agricultural, it talks about trails, but it also mentions equestrian. Do we want to really go with that? And if so, you know, how do we incorporate, incorporate those differences and unique character into whatever we're doing? Because if we don't, it'll just end up being like anything else.
I'd like to see those statements. I'd like to have a list of those statements that aren't incorporated into the west side.
We'll go, we'll go get them for you and we'll provide them for you before the next meeting.
Okay, those are the things that staff is supposed to look at and the planning commission is supposed to look at, and the last time we had something come through, a few of them were not reviewed, they were left out for some reason.
And maybe we've decided that those things needed to be chased, maybe that's why they were left out earlier.
Well, they're still in print, and that.
I know, and you're right, and that general plan hasn't been reviewed for how long now.
And, and one of them was the equestrian trail and just trails in general, and so the map that shows trails wasn't incorporated, and there was a trail going through the property in question. So, you know, do we, do we want to respect the current trails plan and improve it? Because it's certainly something to discuss. So, yeah, we need to bring out the language and say, are we buying into this? And if it is, hasn't been reviewed as part of the process, why are we not reviewing that?
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to pull back the discussion just a little bit, and I should have mentioned this at the very beginning, we need to be done probably 7:15, 7:20 latest. So, I would like, my, my hope for this meeting is that we're at a very high level, we're going to spend some time at the end identifying issues, and I think this is a great issue, something that needs to be addressed as we go forward. We need to review the past and current plans and talk about which ones need to be updated, which one, you know, and at least, at the very least, we need to understand the thought that went into these past ones, and then what, what do we want to carry on, what do we need to tweak, what do we, what needs to be dropped type of thing. So, so I'd say that's a great one for, for later. Let's, let's come back and just, what are we trying to get out of, what, what's the outcome? What are we trying to achieve as a, as a council and not, or as a committee, not really to drop into how we're going to achieve it, but what are we trying to achieve? I think scope, we actually just kind of talked about outcome from the, the polit, from the priority statement, it seems like, and from what was requested of us by community development, we're to provide policy direction for the southwest area master plan.
That also shows up in science, is stormwater master plan.
Stormwater master plan, all right. Anyway, the, the master plan for the southwest, for, for the, in the scope of this committee will be the southwest master plan. Any, any thought, what else are we trying to achieve? Not how are we going to achieve it, but what are we trying to achieve as a, as a committee? What are, what are we going to provide? And this would be, I guess this would be a recommendation.
I think where we say in the, in our statement that we are going to write a master plan, it makes it sound as though we don't have one, and so I think there's some benefit in, in saying that a little differently, that we're going to, to study and revise and update and complement the, you know, the current general plan, or somehow incorporate the fact that we know there's a plan that exists, but we also know that it needs to be, that there needs to be more direction. So, maybe instead of saying we're going to write it as though there wasn't one, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
The worksmith can figure something out to say that we're going to incorporate what we already know, and we're going to add to it and make this, you know, better. And, and then I think there, it is smart to have a little more emphasis, there's a lot of emphasis on development and not a lot of emphasis on the open space and equestrian. There are farmers down there that are going to want, you know, to be able to get around too, with their horses get to the lake or however they go and if they grow and develop, the equestrian trails become very important because, you know, keeping the horses off the road, you know, as much as possible, if it's busy, if they don't want their horses on the road with, with a lot of cars, then the, the equestrian trails, other ways to get to the lake and to get around the neighborhood become very important.
Okay.
So, this, just in incorporating that open space and those that are living there and the lifestyle they have right now, and being able to incorporate some of that into the, it does sound like it works heavy on the development and not as, you know, focused on open space agriculture.
Okay, let me respond to that real quick. So, so I've, Kim says you're not in the room, I've added open spa, previously I added review past current plans under issues, item four, and I added open space and then a sub thing over trails again under issues. Back to kind of the outcome that we're trying to produce, the, the way I look at the plans, I would say that we have plans, plural, for this area, including, because it is covered in the general plan, I imagine, there'll be in the, in the area of the, of, so chapter six, under the area, there's going to be things to talk about it. Neighborhood, neighborhoods will have their own plans, but I believe community development is working on the southwest master plan. And so, I guess that's, that's the, the southwest master plan singular, that I believe this committee should be working on recommendations for policy for that master plan as a very particular thing.
Okay, thank you, that helped.
Push out some comment.
I mean, you've outlined very broadly in your, in your council priorities what the outcomes are. They're very broad statements, and you can refine them as you go, and as you bring in stakeholders, you will want to refine that because you'll have more information from what's wanted out there. My suggestion is, given the timeframe that you put on this morning, is I think you've outlined the broad plans, I think you're probably wise to move on to structure, because your issues, you could, you could spend hours looking out the various issues.
Okay.
And you will over, over the next several months.
Okay, well, I'm hoping this process will be shorter, I mean, I'm hoping we, we get a lot done upfront. It may take some time to, to actually write the plan, but I'm hoping the issues are identified upfront.
So, are we asking for the stakeholders that we want to put, bring in? Is that what you're asking right now?
Just about.
You still follow those?
Yeah, let, okay, okay, comment, and then I'm going to try to bring the question to, to the front.
So, for me, I like to move forward assessing where I am at the moment. You mentioned review past and current plans. If staff is working on a plan, do they have a draft copy? Where are they in the process? Okay, we need to see that draft copy.
So, so just for the audio, there was a nod of the head.
Yes.
For Brian Maxfield. So, yes, there is a draft of the southwest master plan.
That's David Day.
David Day. Sorry.
Thank you, I apologize. Thank you for being here.
He's, he's one of the Daves.
Yeah, I know, I know. All right, sorry, continue.
So, besides that, we have, and many people haven't seen a copy of this, but the draft copy from Envision Utah of their study regarding agricultural and mostly its agricultural uses and how to protect them.
Okay, so we'll include that with the current plans. Okay, so, does anyone feel that at this time, this is a, this is very broad, no questions, this is very broad, but does anyone feel like we're, the purpose of this committee is to create something that falls outside of recommendation of policy direction for the southwest master plan? Does anyone feel like there's something that falls outside of that? Okay?
Now, the only thing I'm wondering about, are we looking at all the development around the high school?
So, our focus is going to be south of the, of the river. If, if I, we can look at this, but I don't think there's actually much land left that's not planned for.
Because of the.
Broadview shores covers most of that, and Mr. Day is, is nodding again that, go ahead.
There's about 10 acres south of the high school, but we assume that would be residential, but that's just our assumption.
Okay, then I'm. Okay, all right, so, so.
I think the only thing that would really come to play is just the transportation.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Which I assume is going to be a, a major component of this. Okay, so we'll have some policy direction about roads, transportation, and we'll, we'll see, we'll see if we get to this. Perhaps, you know, I've, I've, I've created a list, I think some of you have seen it, just as I'm brainstorming, like what are some issues? But we've brought up, Gary brought up airports, and there's, there's some other things, and so I think maybe as an assignment that this committee, before we meet another time, we just write out our own, you know, just kind of brainstorm and think of what are some other things, like let's make sure that we, oh, yeah, these, these past and current plans wasn't on my list. So, everyone write down the, the issues that we want to make sure that we address as a committee, because I, I don't think we may, we may not be able to, to get to this today, but I think it probably is more of an individual exercise anyway. Yes?
The big one for me is the transfer of development credits and establishing sending and receiving zones.
Okay, excellent, okay, put that on your list. So, we are going to move on to item three kind of slash five, because I think how we structure this will affect scheduling. So, my understanding is that the, the council decided that committees were going to be made up of council members, and that's, that's what the, the official committee is. So, our west side planning committee technically has four members, the four council members that have, that were assigned to this committee in our last meeting. Our, for, for example, our development approval process review committee has three members, but when we have meetings, we have, we have members of engineering, of community development, Wade Parker's always there, I don't know if there's anyone else from the administration, but they're, they're always at these committee meetings, supporting and participating. And then we have brought in stakeholders, usually two at a time, two per meeting, and they come in and they present, and they say, "This has been our experience, these are our suggestions," and from that, we, we developed kind of a needs list, and then we, and then we developed these proposed solutions, and that's, that's where we're moving forward. So, that's, that's how this one was set up.
If you want to draw another set of circles, and Kim, correct me if I've understood this. If you want to draw another set of circles, and Kim, correct me if I've understood this wrong, but for example, the budget committee is three members of council plus several members of the community that were selected for expertise, interest, whatever, as I understand it. Kim, my recollection is when you guys make, you know, actually vote on something in that committee, though it's, it's really just the council members that are voting?
Now, the budget committee was set up before we made changes to our rules, but, but this is, this is good.
It is.
Are you still there, Kim?
Yeah, I'm here. So initially with the budget committee was, um, all, we all voted, everybody was a voting member. And then there was some concerns from the administration about that. We did talk about having just the council members were the, the, actually the committee and, and when we redid our how these committees are formed, it, it is the council members that are the committee and we're able to invite any citizens that we want to assist us in, um, you know, finding information and giving, you know, advice. And, and so we have, um, we do have everybody have a say so that we know how all of the members of the committee feel and what the recommendation is going to be. We try to get consensus as much as possible. But yeah, the way we redid the committees, or the policy for the council was that the council members are really the, the committee voting members, but you're, you know, able to invite as many committee members, committee members to come from the, um, community and help, and they can be sitting members of that committee, or like the development review committee where they invite in groups just intermittently, and it's just the council members that are doing it. But both ways are, I'm sorry.
So my suggestion to council, to this committee is that you have the potential of, of doing one model or the other, or a hybrid. And, and if you want to move quickly in terms of getting a lot of work done, I wouldn't make a lot of subcommittees and such. What I would suggest is you focus on is bringing on some citizen advisors into this committee as, as part of the committee and bring your, all your outside stakeholders in, um, as, as the development committee's done and have the reviews. And I think if you do that, you'll have input of people who actually live in those, in those neighborhoods. You'll have, on the committee, you'll have the stakeholders and the various interests coming in, and, and you'll have an ability to, to really get a good broad view of, of issues out there.
Dave, with that thought in mind, I would recommend that we ask a member, perhaps the chair of the new agricultural commission established by the mayor to participate with this committee.
Okay. Um, so, so here, here's, yeah, just kind of stepping back to.
Broad.
Broadly. Um, kind of the model that I'm, I'm, I'd float is, so we've got, we've got the committee and then we have our, it seemed like it had a different name for it, but our citizens advisory board or our, our, there was another word for it, but anyway, advisory board, or, or some, some other name. And I think for the ability to move quickly and, and to keep discussions manageable, you know, this might be eight, eight to 10, eight to 12, I don't know exactly the right size, but I mean, we're talking, we're talking a group that might be able to meet in this room, um, so that everyone can, can discuss and whatnot. Um, we've talked about maybe, you know, doing like a field trip up to, to daybreak or, or some other recognized, well-planned, well-executed development. Um, you know, this is, this is kind of the size of a group that we could possibly take. But beyond that, I almost want to go yet another tier, and I guess I should talk about, I, I imagine the people on this would be kind of some of the opinion leaders in the community. These are people that are respected by their neighbors as people that are open-minded, that are, that understand the issues, that can, that can help, um, that people kind of can, can put their trust in.
Do you want any names right now?
Not yet. Let's, let's talk about structure first, but, but I imagine, I imagine all four of us have been lobbied by people that want to be on this committee. I, I've, I've heard, you know, people have come up and asked me, so, um, but then I, I could see another tier where, where, and I don't know if this is, would be called the stakeholder group. Um, and I almost want to say that this is open to everyone. Anyone who's willing to, to engage and be involved, we're not going to turn anyone away. If someone says, hey, I'm really interested in this, we say, great, we're going to have a meeting on the 15th of this month. Here are your assignments. You need to watch this presentation from the zoning summit, you need to read this article, you know, maybe it's the Envision Utah report, and you need to write your, the top three things that you would like to see out of, that come out, to come out of this process. And, you know, so we actually give them assignments, we help, you know, and if they're willing to spend some time and, and do this, great, come to that meeting, maybe it's held in the council chambers. And, and so everyone who wants to be involved can be involved in some way. We have a smaller group and then, and then we've got the committee, and then, and then we have other, I don't want to call them special interests, but, but, but particular interests, groups that want to come in and do presentations, a little bit like.
Right.
Like we've had there.
So we do need people to come in, whether it be people who want to develop, people who are in agriculture, that want to stay in agriculture. There are actually some people that want to get into agriculture that are not in it. And you have people you could bring in, um, I think it's Peter Mattson, the fellow working with Ovation, who spent 25 years as a, kind of director and, and is, has some experience with development credits. Uh, we could go and visit or get a report from Mabelton that is doing some transfer of credits.
Okay.
So there's, there's entities and resources that we can hear from, just like we did in the other committee.
Yes. Yes. Perfect. Okay. So that, that would be my proposal, is, is kind of a tiered, you know, two, two rings here, and then, and then we bring in, you know, people with different perspectives on different issues to come and, and present probably to the inner two rings. And then, and then this is a broader discussion where we, we present some of the things that we're working on, get their feedback, hear from them on the things that they think we should discuss. So really broad there, and then a little bit more nimble here in the center. Yes? Okay.
I have a little concern about the industry and advisory board and stakeholders. I would hope that some of that advisory board would be stakeholders.
Yes. And, and I am completely open to, to naming these.
We're just throwing designations up there, but as we fill those spots, I don't want stakeholders just to be the, to have a circle that's invited to come, they're, they're part of.
Yeah.
All the discussion.
My, my, I agree. I agree. I think, I think when we, we start looking at that, I think these, and I don't know, maybe 12 is, is too large, but let's, let's, let's pretend it's eight for now and we can, that's up for negotiation or discussion and decision, but, um, I think we need to be very careful with this eight, because if we bring someone that is of a particular, one particular issue, and that's all they really care about, then that's going to weigh heavy on the discussion. Um, and, and that's, that's, I think, I want to be open about it, you know, are, you know, say developers, I think developers are probably a fairly significant player in this, and so, you know.
Do you want one that's actually active or one that has experience, like Dave Gardner's had experience, but just could not currently act?
Not currently active.
On the other side.
So, so right. And, and those, and that's the detail that I think we, we need to work out. So, so those, those are all questions that, that I think need to be, need to be addressed. I just don't, you know, if someone, what can I think of? You know, if someone really wants equestrian trails, I'll just throw that, you know, someone is a big proponent of equestrian trails, and that's really all, not all they're going to talk about, but that's their main focus, you know, I don't know, that might be, be better served out here than in here. Sorry, Kim, I'm, I'm pointing to, you know, kind of these, these, uh, interest groups that, that would present or people that are, anyway.
No, I use that as an example too. I'm not like, you know, a proponent either, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That seems a little black.
As an example, right. Great. Uh, but I, I do think, you know, I, I do think developers are going to be like hand in hand on a lot of this, and so I think it may make sense to bring, bring them in, at least someone, and maybe, and maybe, I think that's, that might be a good compromise, someone that's not actively proposing to develop, but has that experience and can look at it more general than, than, you know, how is this going to affect my particular project?
I would also recommend that we reach out, don't know if they would respond. There's been this huge need and cry for a grocery store and Smiths owns the property. Could we get anyone from Smiths to be involved in our process?
So one, one way to do that would be to have someone like Smiths come in and, and present to us, but maybe have someone from, and that's, that's a really good point, I was going to say economic development, but. Where does staff get in here? I imagine community development, we're, we're going to want to rely on their expertise, we're going to want to rely on economic development, we're going to want to rely on maybe the police chief coming in every so often and saying, hey, by the way, you're not considering these issues.
I don't think you put staff, you, you don't put, this is, you know, you don't put staff on the committee. What you do is, we're here to support, whether it's the administration staff or whoever. I think we just expect to come and, and participate as needed.
But that, but, so, so I think we have the support from, from economic development in here. Um, and then maybe, maybe someone like Smiths wouldn't actually be on the same member board or what, whatever size it is, but would come in and present and say, oh, by the way, these are the things, or, or, or someone from the industry broader and not specific, you know, a specific company.
We should communicate with Smiths and, and I think they should be invited to at least come and listen, if not be on board.
Okay.
What was, Dave, what would you think about having, as far as that inner circle advisory board, having that be made up of all of the neighborhood chairs in the area, because they have been elected by their neighborhoods to be their representative, having them be the advisory board, and then have all the other groups come and give information to the advisory group? Seems like it gets a little less politicized or that it takes, maybe takes some of the lobbying out because their position needs to be a little more neutral where they've been elected by their, their area to represent them. I don't know, it's just a, a thought. And that might keep it a little less complicated when you're looking at just your advisory board and then the, you know, the other stakeholders. So you're not picking winners and losers with the stakeholders.
Yeah. I think that's a great thought. I personally would say that all four, uh, neighborhood chairs in the area focused should be invited. Beth?
Awesome.
There's four, five.
Here's your, yeah, there's, um, six of them on that side.
But, but I believe Lakeview South and Lakeview North are north of the focus.
They're still, they're still west side.
I think that's just going to be, would be the, no.
Yeah. And, 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 right. And Beth is an area, but Beth has, Beth has, seems to have something to say.
Uh, your, your scheduling and structure of it, some of the neighborhood chairs are not as active as others, so getting them to come to meetings may be a little more difficult. I think it's a great idea because one of the complaints is that citizens don't want this to turn into the city telling them what to do on the west side. That's one of the things that's been presented to me several times. But getting them to come and actively participate is a real challenge.
Okay. So, so two ways to approach that would be, one, invite them and, and see if they want to accept or not, or a second would be to have a spot for them and either they can fill it or one of their designees can fill it. How would you feel about that, Kim?
Yeah, I think that's, that's great.
Yeah, that, that pretty much would cover half of the advisory board, and then we just need to be very thoughtful. Um, I, I think Cliff has, has just brainstormed and written down some names that I think should be considered. Uh, with the time we have left, let's take that as a, as another assignment, which is just to, to create a list of people you think should be considered for that, um, that first And, and we can discuss that at our next meeting.
And can we get copies of the plans?
Yeah, we'll get all that.
Yes. We can get all that.
Yeah. So assignments, we'll, we'll start getting you all the resources.
Including the draft copies of stuff that's out there.
Yeah. So list issues, list, and I'm going to call up right now the advisory board, uh, candidates. And then we're going to compile, collect, compile plans. And if you know of a plan you like in Vision Utah's or something that you think should be considered as well, submit it to, to Mr. Strachan.
You mean the one we just paid for?
Anything you can think of. Scheduling, uh, one, one suggestion was made that we could meet, this is just a suggestion, throwing it out there to start the discussion, uh, we could meet every non-council Tuesday, well, basically every second and fourth.
Second, fourth.
Tuesday of the month. How does that hit committee members?
The thought was to, the suggestion was to, to do it, uh, five or 5:30 in the afternoon so you have the potential of bringing in more stakeholders outside of the normal workday. It does mean another partial short evening for you.
And honestly, let me say this, I'd like to have this done in two months, three months. I don't want this to take up all of 2017. I want to, let's, let's get in, let's get this done. Let's take the time that we need to, but let's not delay any more than we have to. And so, let's see, it's September, you know, I'm, I'm hoping maybe we could, we could pull back from these every other week meetings before Thanksgiving. We could get the bulk of it out of the way and then just kind of tie up loose ends during the holidays.
So along with compiling the existing plans, um, some of which are brand new in draft form, uh, I, I've already read the one from Envision Utah's, 58 pages. Uh, it doesn't take that long. We need to read everything that's out there so we all be on the same page, so we're not reinventing or, or rediscovering. Let's just start, uh, at the same level if we can all read that stuff.
Okay. Scheduling, um, how does, how does that strike people? Could we, could we commit to that?
As long as we're, are, are there? Tuesday nights are my church nights, so I usually get twice every month. What time would you like totally out here? What time would you want to be done by? I usually start at about seven, so we're just actually.
Five to, five to 6:30, I think is, we, we need to, we need to keep things focused and, and moving along. And so I think that actually helps us by saying, we're done at 6:30. And, you know, people need to hang out afterwards and, and, and just discuss other, you know, that's fine, but the actual committee meeting is going to be done 6:30. Okay. So let's, let's do that. And then, and then we'll need to discuss at some point, and we'll, we'll, we'll hold off on that. Yes?
Might I make a suggestion then, as, as you look to schedule your next one, that we set aside a portion to resolve some of these issues that you, that you, for the homework, but at the same time that I can sit down with you as chair and, uh, we can start scheduling stakeholders to come participate in our meetings.
Okay.
So that we have your meetings, um, set up and, and going forward, that we know who's coming, coming when.
Okay.
And, and the, the community will also then know who we've got coming when.
Okay. Lastly, just to maybe bring this up so we can, we can be thinking about it between now and the next meeting. As far as scheduling is concerned, and we, we, okay, is, um, we have, we have people who have already been working under the current plans and, and guidelines and have been developed, have been preparing proposals for us, and, and different ones are at different points of that. Um, the question came up last Tuesday, a week ago in work committee, you know, is our intent to not? you know, is there an intent to not do any zoning changes between now and when the plan is completed? That would be kind of be one extreme. The other extreme would just, you know, approve things that fit the current stuff, just, you know, anything that comes in that fits the current plans, we just approve. Or is there somewhere in the, in the middle there that we, that we can get some of the broadest brushstrokes of what we're looking for, to have an integrated community and then establish those and then plans that fit those broadest ones, we feel comfortable moving forward with while we work out the finer details and draft the plan and go through the, the whole process? Would we feel comfortable greenlighting some of these re-zones that we feel at least meet the broad, broad structure that we're developing?
So for me, the key at this point is if we are going to have a meaningful policy about preserving agriculture, we need to work with that committee. We need to identify those people and we already have some coming forward saying, yes, I want to stay in the business. So identifying where we are going to have open space, green space and agricultural.
Okay.
And that can, that's a key element because if you're going to develop, you have to develop around that and not on top of it. Because once you develop on top of where you really wanted something, it's over.
And it seems to me though, Dave, that if people want to sell to the developer, they're saying they don't want to be in the business anymore.
I understand that, but there are people that are wanting to stay in the business and we've already identified some names, the committee, and, and so we need to identify the parcels in question regardless of who owns it, but if they're friendly and say, I want to stay in business. So if we're going to have any agricultural at all on the west side, where is it going to be?
And my biggest concern when we talk agriculture, I'm thinking livestock and those type of things. Those, are they the ones that, you know, I don't mind the vegetables and things like that. I don't mind living by that, but I do start to worry about living too close to cows and-
There, there are some people in the, in that business, right, Ken? And, and the question is, do we want to respect that or say you're, you're not in the picture? If that's the discussion.
Well, I want, one thing that we should, and we're way too deep into details. I do want to throw this out and, because I want the whole public to understand this. We are not proposing like, hey, you know what, we just planned this for your plot and so you have to sell or we're going to take your land from you or anything. Whoever owns the land has current uses, until they decide to sell, nothing is changing. So if someone's in the beef business, you know, there's no one that's going to force them out of that.
I understand that, but the whole idea of having development credits is to designate with the consent of the owners saying, okay, you want to stay in business and you want to sell your development rights so that someone else on the west side can develop at a higher density using those credits and higher density where it's appropriate on a, on a main corridor or an intersection, wherever. Because right now we're kind of pegged, and Dave helped me on this, the average on the west side is four per acre.
Four acres.
Yeah. So if you want to go at eight or 12 or 16 per acre and you want to buy up some credits from someone who wants to stay green and in the business, but they want to have an inheritance for their kids, so they sell the development credits and they stay forever in the agricultural business, that's how it's worked out elsewhere. You have to identify-
I just have a trouble with that forever word.
Well-
I don't see this committee saying something that's going to be forever.
If you sell the development credits, then you have sold the right to develop housing on that property in the future.
But they can buy them back. They can buy back those credits later on if they, if they want to develop their property. They could pay, they could pay back, right?
Aren't most of the Mapleton's development credits, they're going from a two and a half acre to a higher density. They're not going from agriculture to a high density. They're mostly going from-
So I think we're really deep in the details now.
So it's not a, it's not that extreme.
Development credits and things like that, those are details that, that we can, we can discuss later. I'm just, I'm just saying, we need to, we need to be respectful. We need to be understanding the people that put money down on, on contracts, on, you know, getting things in. So I think we need to at least be sensitive to that and understand that there's some of these economic realities. And, you know, that's not to say that we have to approve something or, or act just because something's under contract, but we should at least be aware of that and understand consequences of the time that we're taking and whatnot. So, so let's, let's address that in two weeks. Let's see if we can have a, I'd like, I'd like that to be at least some sort of consensus on how we're going to move forward and what that's going to look like by the time we end in, in two weeks. I'd also, I'll, I'll work with Cliff on this. I'd also like possibly to have our first meeting before two weeks.
Yeah, it's good.
Which is broader for you.
Well, the invite, the, the, the eight to 12, which I would assume would include the four of you, right, as part of that?
If so, then I would push it towards 12.
That's what I'm saying. You have that as your 12. And, and so you've got six to eight spots to put on your, on your broader committee. My suggestion is, let's do that. Let's have, let's have another committee meeting like this to just finish up some of the organizing, set up a schedule. And then when we hit the road, when we, when we have our first broader meeting on two weeks from today, we're moving already into people coming in and doing presentations. We're not still organizing.
Okay, okay. All right. So this broader stakeholders, to me, this, this is the whoever is willing to do some of these assignments can show up. This is kind of the council chambers type.
I think for simplicity, you don't want to have, if you want to move quickly, you don't want to have too many committees. So you have your, you have your broader board, which is the four of you plus your, your, say, the neighborhood chairs, right?
Right.
The stakeholders come in as attendees.
Right.
And they come in and they make presentations, just like outside interest groups.
And whether, this might be a once a month, this might be, you know, once every two months kind of thing, whatever. But, but I would like to invite anyone who has interest to at least come in and be a, a part of that process.
Well, I think that's why you do it as the broader meeting. You, they come to your, they come and attend in your meeting. They can participate as much as you want, but if you have, start having too many meetings and stuff, you're burdening staff trying to, to fulfill those obligations and differentiate between them. But if you want to move quickly, you've got to have that core group of eight to 12 and everything goes through them.
Can we get this in place in two weeks?
Oh, yeah. I think so.
And how would, how would the committee approve who's on this and who isn't?
That's where you have your smaller one. You have one, let's have another meeting like this in a week.
Okay.
And give us a staff, give us the staff the opportunity to go out and reach out to, if it's neighborhood chairs that you want us to talk to, we'll go out and talk to them, find out their interests and who wants to be. And if they don't, aren't interested, we'll ask about their vice chairs.
Can we just go ahead and make that decision and give you that direction now? Why not?
Well, I see, I see, I mean, if we do the neighborhood chairs, I can see up to five. So we've got four and five.
I thought you had six in the west side.
That's if you include them all.
Yeah.
I was including the, the four that are within the, the focus area and then the area rep.
Okay.
So that's, that's where I came up with the five. We've got four here, but I do think that there may be, I mean, I know Julie Rash was on your, your list.
As a potential, yeah.
I think people like that, I'm not saying her, but people like her should be considered for, for this as well.
And I would really like to see someone from community development, not just staff. I think that they would should be, I would like to see them as part of that board.
Okay.
Inside advisory, not just as a stakeholder.
Like Bill Pepperoni?
Like Bill or Dave. Dave's in engineering or something, but yeah, like Bill.
Okay. I mean, I would hope that they're, they're at all of the meetings and they've committed, the departments have committed to, to fully supporting this.
I would expect them to be there. I'd be concerned about having any member of staff as a voting member of your committee. Certainly we're here to support and advise or do work for you.
We, we have some other critical members I think we should invite. I mentioned Marcus Smith, who's the new chair of the agricultural commission.
Okay. So, so how about another assignment? Again, actually, right here, we have it. Let's, within the next three days, send Cliff people you think that should be considered for the advisory board. Okay? And if you want to put staff on it, you can, you can do that. You may want to talk to staff about that as well, but-
I will.
Let's, let's, let's do that in the next three days. So before, before the end of Friday, have, have your list in to, to Bill. And we're, we're over time. We do need to wrap up.
Email those to me.
Cliff. Email this to Cliff.
Yes. Did I say something different?
Bill. That's okay. It's early.
Bill will just forward them to Cliff, so yes. Mr. Strachan. All right. I, well, it's an open meeting, so I'll look for a motion to close during the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Connect. Six seconds. All right. By Mr. Van Buren, all in favor?
I'm-
All right. Thank you all and the meeting is adjourned.